Chairman of Lee County Board of Commissioners calls the meeting to order. This being a special meeting, on this the 30th day of June 2008. We will have the invocation by Mr. Hall. I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us stand.
We bow our heads in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. We thank thee for the water and the rain that we received last night. We ask our Father that you would be with the members of this board as they meet today to tend to the affairs of our county, guide them in their deliberations, and may all that is said and done be pleasing and acceptable in your sight, for we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item, leave, Mr. Crumpton?
Yes, sir. We just need to add a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Department to Item A with the other amendments.
All right. We'll just make this Item A-1, consider A and A-1 at the same time. Any other additional agenda? Your motion that the agenda be approved?
No.
All favor say aye. Any opposed say no. So ordered. The purpose of our meeting today, this being really a special call meeting, is to consider items that need to be done to close out the present year that we are in, and to discuss and hopefully approve the budget ordinances that will be presented by the county manager. At this time, I will recognize Ms. Minner for budget amendments.
You now have before you two different budget amendments. Both of these are mainly to take care of year-end closeout. There are some additional revenue line items. We have $201 of have owed grants for elections. That was in addition to what we had booked earlier in the year. You also have the appropriation of the Medicaid relief hold harmless funds, along with a portion of the Medicaid savings to hold the schools harmless for the loss of public school building capital funds. We are doing that. The total amount that we are setting aside for that is...
$316,404.
It is, right. $316,404. Thank you. I'll be glad to answer any other questions you have on those. And then you also have the additional budget amendment to appropriate additional funds for the Sheriff's Department for various expenditure line items that are running over at this point.
This $193,000 on there for the Sheriff's Department. That is taken when we went to Southern Health Partners.
The $193,000 for the jail. $13,000 of that is going into the contracted services line item, which is where they pay for the safekeeping when we send inmates to Raleigh, to Central Prison for safekeeping. They are considered too dangerous to be in the local jail for various reasons. And then there's also $50,000 going into the medical contracted services, which would be related to, in addition to safekeeping, to our medical charges while they're in safekeeping, or additional costs that we've incurred here above and beyond what we've paid Southern Health Partners. $130,000 of that $193 is going into food supplies. With the additional population at the jail this year, our food costs have basically skyrocketed, but it's related to the fact that we have been at a much higher capacity level this year than what we have been in the past.
A few years ago, we were getting a breakdown when we had, when we exceeded our jail capacity or it increased. For example, if some people were in there for minor offenses that were enjoying the luxury of free meals a day, health benefits, the whole works. We still get a report on that because at one point, they had a magistrate work and others were reviewing their cases and pressing them out.
I know the pre-trial program that is ran under Social Services now does try to get especially the medical ones out to keep our medical costs down. I'm going to ask Ms. Potts if she gets anything like that now. Do you know if y'all are getting that breakdown as to...
Sorry, I can't talk. Yes, we do. I think it's one of those things, as fast as we get them out of pre-trial, I know there's, for every one we're letting out, you know, there's two or three more coming in. And so it's just one of those things, maybe, you know, there's some that you can't, you know, they don't qualify for pre-trial, so they can't come out.
Right.
But it's been one of those things, it's been a standing joke between the sheriff and I all year that as soon as we get them out, he's been lit up again. But, you know, I've got some figures I can show you, the pre-trial figures.
I'm more interested in knowing what's left, if you understand what I'm asking. If you've got people in there for bad checks or trespassing, things like that.
Those are coming out. Even some of the drug cases are coming out.
So this is...
The high traffic in cases, a lot of those that are still in.
Most of those are, all of those are under house arrest, aren't they? They have bracelets.
That are out, most of them are, yes.
And I know we've been hampered a little bit in the past because we did not have enough bracelets, but we bought some more. We can handle more now.
Our population increase has increased 10.7% over the same figure for last year when we did the budget presentation. So through March of 2008, we were looking at a 10.7% increase, or an average daily population of 127.33.
How are braces holding up?
Good. The problem hadn't been with us not being able to handle the cases that were there, they just didn't qualify. The judges didn't recommend pre-trial release or house arrest.
Okay.
But we can get some stats for you.
Well, if you feel comfortable the way it's being handled, I'm fine, but I question it.
Well, Andrea Curran, she is located at the courthouse. She stays on top of it. I know I've been down there and seen her in the courtroom about every time that I've been down there.
No, I'm not questioning her, I already know, I'm just looking at...
And she's up, she's up sitting up there inside the ball.
She helps to get them out, and I'm looking at who's putting the man and what they're going in for.
The additional Item A-1, which was the handout, is another, so we got $61,024,198,000 and $193,000 that between the sheriff and the jail were over budget.
The $24,198 was related to the fire that occurred this year, so you did have insurance refunds coming back in to offset that cost. Yes, sir. So you had the $193 plus $67,000 that were unfunded, leverages that were having to take out, fund outs appropriation.
This new A-1, what exactly are we looking at here?
That...
Salaries and wages and...
Right. That is to cover, the majority of that is to cover salaries and wages and temporary salaries. Temporary salaries may be a little bit less than that, I'm having to kind of estimate through today. Maintenance for vehicles, printing and vehicle gas and all, was anticipating all three of those lines are either already over or will be over. Vehicle gas and all, I think, is not over yet, but when you look at what their bills have been running, I anticipate that they would go over when we booked the last payment this year.
So we're a good $250,000 over in our budget with the Sheriff's Department, all right?
And the jail.
And the jail.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
The status on A-1 comes, on all of that going on.
I'm still working that out with Mr. Hayward. We hope to have a contract at the July 21st meeting that lays out what we're doing between the two departments. The city would actually like for us to handle directly all our phone calls instead of having it run through their PSAP. They would like for us to be able to handle calls that come from the county. So we're trying to figure out, I should say, calls that come from the unincorporated areas of the county. Trying to figure out how we can do that and how we can spend money that we already have on hand without increasing costs to the county. So we're still, we're still discussing how to do that. They'd like for us to take over the dispatching of the fire districts as well, and the sheriff is, you know, the one willing to do that.
Any other questions concerning the budget amendments?
I have just a couple of simple ones. The Social Services, the Cronos, where it says Social Services can claim reimbursement revenues, does that mean next fiscal year we'll get that refund transferred back from Social Security, Social Services into the general fund?
Actually, we'll look at it as receivable into this year, and then only costs that are paid in next year would be going against next year.
And who does that refund, reimbursement revenue come from?
The state.
The state.
Various programs that they use that can request reimbursement, just like their other expenditures.
Okay. So that's not really a net outlay?
No. We took that into account when we were figuring what we needed to budget for the Cronus project. This was, when all the money was budgeted, it was all put in the Finance Department for ease of accountability. Now that we know kind of where we are and can divvy out the cost, we've moved it so that they could claim it, and so we can get that reimbursement, but that was taken in account when we figured what we needed for the project.
Okay. And on the debt service, where it says fees have run higher than expected, is our interest fixed? So where did the extra fees come in?
That's bank handling fees, what they charge us for the fact that they take our money and then turn it around and pay the debt bond holders, or the COPS holders in this case, and it was just higher than we anticipated with the additional COPS, first payment on additional COPS. It's a set fee, it's just we failed to increase our number to take account for it. The COPS work a little differently than our bonds have worked in the past, so...
Ship and handling.
...ways one amounts to.
When did you know about these amendments, especially for large public jails?
We had known probably back when we started the budget process, especially on the food, that we were going to come up short. Contracted services for medical was probably the same timeframe. We just, I held off until now to have a better idea of how much money we would need. And actually, I think in the last couple of budget monthly updates, I've said that we need, we're going to be coming back for some things. The salaries and wages for the Sheriff's Department, I'll be honest with you, that I did not realize until I was going back through and looking at having to, having switched to a bi-weekly payroll, we will have to do a partial accrual of our last payroll, and I was going back to check budgets for that to make sure we were going to be okay, and that's when I realized they were going to be suffering the whole salaries and wages.
I know you, this is being redundant, but I did hear, clearly hear what was being said about the medical. I remember sometime ago when I first read it, there was a $50,000 clause in there, and now it seems you have triggered itself, so what happened?
Right. We triggered ourselves several months back on the $50,000 pool, and these are additional charges that we have had, plus when they go to Raleigh for medical reasons, we end up picking up medical expenses up there, and that along with the other costs we've had that's hit $50,000. It's, it was not that, you know, we left some money in there to know that we may go over, as we talked, I think, at one of the work sessions on the jail medical. It's, it's a risk we take, we can't control it, it's hard to compare one year to another. You have no idea what the condition of an inmate's going to be when they come in, so...
Have you been able to, I know in finance, we had talked about you getting your arms around being able to compare what we had, you know, the data and historical data we had with Social Services compared to Health Partners?
Yeah. I was holding off until the end of the fiscal year to try to figure out what we can do, and then what we can do going forward to keep comparisons going for you. So, no, I haven't done that yet.
The Health Department?
Yeah.
Health, yes.
The Health Department?
Yeah, the Health Department used to do medical at the jail.
Oh, you were talking, we were actually, in finance, we were actually talking about you developing a form.
Right. For when Health Department, compare Health Department's costs to this.
And they want for them to report to you in a manner that you'd be able to pull that particular out.
And we were assured that they were going to report this, and we've not seen any report, have we?
Right. And I'm going to try to do that once we get through this fiscal year to start the new fiscal year.
That contract is a yearly contract?
Yes, but we already need it for next year because it starts in June, based on when we switched last year. And that $50,000 may be more than needed, but it's, we won't see the June bills for a while, and so I...
And they lag?
Yeah, and the...
The bills lag quite a bit?
North Line Department Correction especially, it can be two months behind, if not three sometimes, so we may not need that whole 50. I don't think I have their actual report here to tell you where they are right now.
If the whole amount is not used, does it just roll right over?
It rolls back into jail.
Okay.
Right. It just, yeah. I don't have the jail's current expenditures, maybe I have the Sheriff's Department, but not the jail's.
All right. What's your pleasure on Item A and A-1?
I'm going to move to approve, but I still want to ask a question.
All right.
Would any of that $50,000 in that health area, would any of that be for mental health claims or cases, for example, going over to a local hospital and not being able to get services in that transport somewhere? Are they tracking that information well, if you know? I'm not trying to get you to answer for them, just either yes or no, they have sent a report or they don't send a report.
I am still sure Southern Health Partners knows who they've been paying for services to, so I would think they do, and I'm trying to remember back, I've gone through the bills, and I think they give them, I think I remember seeing a breakdown of who they've paid out. So, I mean, I think they would know if they've had to pay Lee Hart, I mean, Sand Hill Center for Medical Services, or if we've had to transport someone to UNC for psychiatric care. I know a lot of times there's transports related to that.
Well, we asked the Sheriff's Department to keep track of the man hours that they would be inconvenienced, because as we move towards this, I guess they're going to overhaul mental health again, if you talk like it, but anyway, as we move in that direction, I'd like what's be able to say, these are kind of hours and man hours that we're losing and...
And I know in the report they have sent me in the past, they've had man hours on there. I need to verify with Mr. Everett or Captain Everett if those are related to the mental health or not.
We don't have a representative from the Sheriff's Department. Mr. Clark, you know it.
Lisa, you're speaking with the, in reference to the amount of increase with the food service with the jail. Do you think it would be a wise move to see about putting that back out forbid, or has it been long enough of, you know, using their services?
It is an annual contract, and...
Automatically renewed on July 1st. We did go over, the price per meal is pretty inexpensive, I think it's a dollar eighty.
It's up 4%, so I don't know that.
It's in the dollar eighties, so the price per meal is pretty inexpensive. What's driving that is, is the population. Since January 1st, they've been at maximum population almost every day. You can count the number of days they haven't been at maximum capacity on your one hand.
Senior services, they, they're, they enter into that also.
Oh, yeah.
But they, they pay, they reimburse for their part.
For the Meals on Wheels program.
All right. Although in favor of approval of Amendment A and A-1, say aye. Any opposed, say no. So ordered, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the adoption of the Fire District Budget, Budget Ordinance for FY 08-09, Mr. Crumpton, and I would say that we have already approved the budget, but we need to approve the budget ordinance in order to put it into effect.
Yes, sir. I don't think there's much to add to that unless anybody has any questions.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made to approve the budget ordinance concerning the fire districts. Any discussion? If there's none, although in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. Is so ordered. Vote is unanimous. Item C, Adoption of Capital Improvements Program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The CIP for the next five years has never been formally adopted by the board, and if everybody remembers, the original CIP, we were optimistic that we would get the sales tax referendum passed. It did not pass, so we revised the CIP, delivered it on May 7th, and we have not formally adopted the program, so we're at the, on the last day here, and then we can adopt this as well.
Well, these figures that you give us, they are really not binding, but it's what we hope we can do right.
Yes, sir. And if you notice, I've, instead of kind of it being a wish list, I've tried to be a little bit more optimistic or realistic and pushed the items back so people wouldn't get the expectation of funding. And right now, the only, the only project that I have recommended funding in the next two years is the Sanley Park Dam restoration. It's the only one I know of that we have funds available to fund and that we're committed to doing, so, you know, the next two years are pretty lean, and unless we can find another source or get that quarter cent sales tax revenue passed.
I have a question. For some reason, I thought the QZAP bonds were going to do something with the Eastleigh and Wesley, and on the replace the electric heat, you have $1,007,000, fiscal year 1112, and the same amount, oh wait, that was total. And with the Wesley, do the QZAP bonds, aren't they going to cover some of that?
They're not covering the major replacement of that. I think there was some other minor repairs that they're using for the HVAC handling at the two schools, and then there were some switches and...
Painting.
Pardon?
Painting.
Painting and some other things.
Roof repairs.
I was getting ready to say roof repairs was in, quite a few.
But there wasn't anything major being done to the HVAC units, just minor.
And when you get this request from them, are they an aligned item, so that we know what the basis are for repairs, they just don't throw an amount out there, right?
Well, the way the form is designed is they have to give your, the engineering and architectural fees, and then the, what the, if in this particular instance, equipment would be, construction. So it is broken down, but it's not broken down into a fine line item. So they are estimates, and until there's a reasonable expectation of funding, you're not going to go any further to actually come up with, you know, spend the money to get a hard estimate.
So down on line six and seven, where it's for the Eastleigh and Wesley repairs and renovations, same thing there, do you get a purpose and function for what they're requesting?
It's not, well, this is capital, so you don't necessarily get purpose and function. You get it listed by the category, you know, whether it be architectural and engineering fees, or construction, or equipment, that type of thing. Contingency. And then we also ask them to give us an estimate of what ongoing expenditures would be to support that capital.
And then the Lee County Emergency Ops, the $1,004 in fiscal year 1011, what's that for?
That is to, the idea here is to put Emergency Operations Center at the courthouse in the basement. We've run out of space at the City Hall. When they do emergency management training or, you know, preparedness type training thing, we can't get all the people in the room. So what we're looking at here is in conjunction with trying to expand the Sheriff's Office, trying to build a bigger room that would house them at the courthouse, and plus that's in the basement there, that would be a contained area, that would be a safe area.
Can we use some of those E911 funds for that? Or is that, can that be used on capital?
Yes, ma'am. That was part of the idea, in transferring that money to the general fund.
I have just one other comment, is the wording in the resolution. I have a problem with the fourth whereas, it says the projects include the capital improvements program, will improve the quality of life for all Lee County citizens now and in the future. I just have a problem with quality of life, that's all in the life of, of the eyes of the beholder, so I don't know why we need to have that wording in there.
I'm on page 11, the fourth whereas.
Are you against quality of life?
What I perceive as quality of life and what somebody else perceives might be different. I know right now we've got a lot of senior citizens whose quality of life means they're struggling on a fixed income trying to pay their property taxes, so for their quality of life, it would be a reduction of property taxes. So quality of life is all in the eyes of the beholder, and I don't know that can be defined by any government body.
So I guess that's a no vote for you. I mean, I'm not...
I'm just, I'm just saying I, I would like to see that whereas, the whole paragraph taken out. This, something that can't be defined.
Well, I wonder why politicians use it all the time.
You may, I started to say, we hear it a lot.
Yeah.
And like you say, maybe, it means one thing to one person and something else to somebody else. Are you making a motion to take this paragraph out?
I will move to strike that, that fourth whereas paragraph on the resolution.
All right. Although in favor of removing it, say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, say no. Vote is six to one in fails.
And how's it measurable? How will, how will it improve it?
I don't think, I don't think that's up to this board.
Performance technology person, it's got to be measurable.
I don't, I don't think it's up to this board to define it, as you say.
If you're above ground tomorrow, then it's good quality of life. If you're underground, say hello to my friends.
I say to a lot of people who work hard, their quality of life would be a lot better if they could keep more of their hard earned money.
We all agree with that. All, there's nobody sitting here who wouldn't like to have more than money and pay fewer taxes. Everybody agrees with that. But to make a positive statement about quality of life, hopefully, there'll be somebody who will benefit from it, or at least be inspired to try and make life better.
Like a real man.
For, for all Lee County citizens, I think that's pretty hard to accomplish.
We try to make the best of what you got. We're trying to, we're trying to do that. I mean, you can't please everybody by no means, but you can try to make things better. And that's what I look at, that's one of the things that I look at.
Do I hear a motion on the approval of this CIP?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Although in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Vote is unanimous. Moving on to Item D, Mr. Crumpton.
Yes, sir. Chairman, starting on page 14 is the Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Year 2008, 2009. I think we've been through it, so...
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try one more time. I'm going to move that we amend this budget ordinance by allocating $99,000 for the two sheriff's deputies. It has to come out of the general fund, it has to come out of the general fund. And I want to take everybody back here a few years, about 2004, when the CAD group, Citizens Against Drugs, was organized. They were not happy with law enforcement in the county, they were not happy with their concerns not being heard by the city, county Drug Enforcement Agency, and someone put these in my possession today, and this is just a few of them, but there's over 10,000 signatures here. And just to read what the first page says, these are kept under lock and key, for anybody running for public office, this would be a... For anybody running for public office, this would be a bonanza for recruiting. It says, "We, the people of Lee County, demand for our protection, at least six more road deputies now for the safety and welfare of our children in homes." And so, I'm going to urge this board one more time to do the right thing. The primary role of government is public safety. And I think, you know, we just need to do the right thing, so I make that motion.
What was the date on those? Is that the petition that you were reading?
These were back in two thousand four. And actually, the person who started all of this and got it organized was actually the Lee County citizen in the year two thousand five.
That's Ginny Fairley.
How many road deputies have been added since that time?
Three, what, three last year, what?
Anybody edit that dig?
Yeah, we added two road deputies last year, plus the crime scene investigator.
Yeah.
And.
Three.
How many positions is it this year?
We add two this year with the grant position, right?
Five, five total positions.
You know, it only makes sense to have all of his shifts fully staffed. Like I, was pointed out to me by a concerned citizen, if the sheriff's office gets a call, a domestic violence call, he has to send two deputies there. So, if he's got somebody on vacation or somebody's sick or he doesn't have all his shifts filled, you know, we don't have enough people to respond.
Have you done an analysis on how much time he spends in the city?
I know he's working on drugs there. People in the city are calling him.
They, they call him instead of the city.
Well, that boils down to matter of choice then. Let, let me ask you, what was the statement you, you just made about? You said they have to send two out for?
If they get a domestic violence call, they have to send two deputies out for every domestic violence call.
Is that the law or is that a matter of choice by his department?
I think it's a matter of law.
We have a, doesn't he have a domestic officer?
Yeah, he has one, a nice vehicle.
He has to send deputies out, he has to send two of them.
Ms. O, are you familiar with that law?
I think it's actually standard operating procedures for all law enforcement. I don't know that it's actually a state law, but I think that's their operating procedures.
Well, I've, I've been told that that's one of the most dangerous calls they get, really.
That's why they send two.
Dangerous call, but in just about every.
The point is, if, if everybody's doing it, then it's not anything unusual.
No, but if he doesn't have his shifts fully staffed, it still places stress there. And we just need to make sure that, I know there are a lot of concerned people. And obviously, in November two thousand six, a lot of these people decided to make a change in county law enforcement. And depending on what they see this board do, I think a lot of them are going to be motivated for this November also.
Actually, in two thousand six, they had to make a change. The existing sheriff is already retired. So, they were going to make a change, whether they picked the current sheriff or somebody else. The change was bound to county. So, let's not say that's why he got elected.
I think, you know, I remember from that campaign, one candidate advocated keeping the city county buggy, but the other one said he's going to take it on himself. I think that was a big issue.
Any further discussion on the motion?
What's the motion?
She's made a motion that we.
Amend the budget ordinance by allocating ninety-nine thousand dollars to the sheriff's department for two additional deputies, which will allow his shifts.
And, and how many, how many staff would, are you talking about for this fiscal year? How many would that be?
I don't know what the total amount is.
Eight, that would be.
Why don't you know what the total amount is?
I don't, all I know is what he needs to complete his shifts. And what he needs to patrol this county.
We're talking about two additional deputies, right?
Two additional deputies.
Why, why then did he not add or tell us that's what he wanted instead of the two dispatchers?
Glad you bring that up because I have a little problem with the finance committee also. I was a little blindsided when we asked Sheriff Carter to come here and speak to us to find out that he'd had conversations with individual finance committee members before we met on June nineteenth. So, you know, being naive as I am, I figured that our finance committee would together collaborate on what was needed instead of individual members contacting. So, I don't know what was said.
Well, what are you implying? Because obviously, you have discussion with the sheriff that I don't know about. So, tell me what it is you're implying.
I contacted him prior to the finance committee.
So, it's okay for you, but not us.
Prior to our June nineteenth, so I could bring it up at the meeting. I didn't know. You guys have contacted him.
Well, what makes you think he didn't contact one of us or both of us? Is he off limits and prohibited from doing that as well?
No.
Well, then I don't understand what you're implying. But if you're implying that something was wrong, I want you to say it and be specific about it.
I thought you yourself mentioned when he was here that day to ask him if you remember our conversation of June fif-
I certainly did. And I told you when I walked into the finance meeting that I had just got off the phone with him.
That was June nineteenth. We had our finance committee here.
Well, when the sheriff.
This was June the fifth when we met.
When the sheriff came, when the sheriff came and made his talk before us. Yeah, it was, it was my understanding at the conclusion of that, that he was satisfied with what we were going to do for him, that it had been recommended.
That's five new positions.
And again, I don't know how the, that was phrased. And that's all water under the bridge. I, I made the.
Hell, it is.
Let's, let's call the question.
It's not water under the bridge, if you read the paper.
Just call the question.
All right. Although in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Although opposed, raise your hand. Four to three. Motion failed. All right, moving on.
Mr. Chairman, speaking of that, I'd like to amend the sheriff's budget to allow the sheriff to use the five positions in any combination that he so chooses, whether it be the two grant positions, a jailer, a dispatcher, and two road deputies. Or in it, in the, any other combination that he chooses, whether it be a jailer, a dispatcher, and a road deputy. Leave that up to him. That would put the road deputies in there if he so chooses and sees the need to have them out there instead of the dispatchers. That would give him that option and leave the, the county manager to contact him and work out that so far as the budget's concerned.
You make that motion?
Yes, sir.
In other words, he wants to do, he wants, he wants to approve the five positions, but allow the sheriff to, to choose what is his priority in those positions.
Do the grant positions, you know, specify.
You have, yeah, the grant positions have to be.
Grants that can't do.
Yeah, the grant positions have to be used for two sworn officers. One is a gang task force officer and the other is a drug task force officer.
So, that leaves us three.
So, that leaves him three positions to.
Put two road deputies if he wants to.
I guess I, I have a problem with that because I trust the sheriff in, in what he needs. And I think he probably had a hard time because I know he has jailer needs. I know he has dispatch needs. And it's just two additional positions. And I'm certainly not forgiving the sheriff a blank check. You know, I would not do that, but.
We're broke after that.
Well.
You can get blood out of the.
Like, we'd be broke. You don't have anything to give.
It's a matter.
All the checks would be blank.
It's a matter of priorities, you know? Public safety comes before winterizing houses, before cultural events, before adding three and four assistant principals at some of the schools, in my opinion. So, it's a matter of priorities.
Any other discussion?
Well, I want to be clear on, on the motion. It's still that, a total of five.
Yes, sir.
Still a total of five, but he's had the, the.
He has the leeway.
The authorities to distribute them the way he wants.
Three positions he so chooses.
And if he substitutes, that's what I was saying, if he substitutes the deputies, there'll be an increase in the budget. We'll just have to come back and do a budget.
And that'll be okay, and that's what we're approving, right?
Okay.
All right.
I don't know how transferable those skills are, you know, I really don't. And that's why I think we're stepping in.
If he wants the two deputies, he can have the two deputies. He wants the two dispatches.
But he may, there may be a different skill set if he needs, he needs them all.
I, I need more employees too.
Does that mean that the other?
Theirs not paying for it.
I can't, well.
Other department heads that need folks, you don't think they need theirs either? Or you think the only, the only legitimate hiring that you see in this budget is strictly for the sheriff?
I don't think I've ever said that any additional hiring is strictly for the sheriff, but I'm saying.
I just said, is that the way you feel? That's all I ask you. I didn't say you said anything.
I think I made my position very clear. Public safety is the number one priority.
Is that any different than quality of life?
I, depends on what you, how you define quality of life. I, as a, somebody elected to public office, I, I can't define quality of life.
Okay.
Also, the two grant positions, and I don't think it's been really spelled out, but the county is putting money into those two positions by providing the fringe benefits for them. The salary is the only thing that the grant covers. And when they become an employee of the county, then we pay the fringes. Is that correct?
If we have a problem with gangs and rising crimes.
We're on the hook for two years. And then after the two years, I think there's an expectation by the department that we'll fully fund them because they're, the grants won't get extended on these two positions.
I think we have been very generous to the sheriff in the last two years. I think we have been very generous to him. And we have done, we have gone through and cut a million two out of our own county government budget. And he is the one who's getting the lion's share of this budget percentage wise. So, I, you know, me, you know, if this is political, it's political, but you know, I think we have really, really given them. I mean, this is two last year, five this year. Nobody else has grown like that. And you know, when you have, last month, we had two hundred thousand dollars less than sales tax revenues. You know, what happens at the end of the year when we come up with a big budget shortfall and that budget amendment comes in and is four hundred thousand dollars? And we had to raise property taxes because of, we've given two deputies that are going to go on in perpetuity. I mean, once you hire somebody, that's it. It's, it's there. It's, it's not like, you know, a hundred twenty thousand dollars that EDC didn't get. It's, that's a one-time thing.
And I will share with you, and then I think we can draw us to a close, what one elderly taxpayer said to me today. He said, Linda, he said, the only public service I feel I get out of the county is the public safety. And he said, what I pay for the volunteer fire department, my taxes I pay there. He said, that's the only, those are the only county services I feel I get.
What's he with his garbage?
He calls it himself.
He has to, to the center.
No, he pays to have somebody come around, same person that I paid to come pick up my.
What, what did we do last year on Sheriff's Department?
Three positions.
Three.
It's two deputies and the crime scene investigator.
So, three positions last year, five positions this year.
Well, he needs, like, when we started.
Three positions last year, and I believe you voted against the budget last year.
I voted against the budget because of the process.
Okay, and this year, you have become seemingly an expert in the sheriff's department needs and budget.
I don't, I think that's unfair to say that. I am going by what I hear from, I'm not an expert in anything.
He's speaking on behalf of the sheriff, and he stood right here and said that he had already decided with the county manager and his chief deputy on what he felt he could get by with. But that's what he said. Is that not right?
I think when you said, you recall our conversation of June fifth, you were maybe putting him in a hole a little bit. And I don't know what that whole conversation involved. So, all I'm saying.
Five positions is what it involved.
All I'm saying is I don't know if it was said to him that, listen, this is all that is in the budget.
Did you ask him?
All right, we're, we're covering ground now that's already been covered.
Did you ask?
Uh, let's get back to the motion on the floor.
Hold on a second. You asked him and he said, what, we didn't, we didn't cover that?
I.
You asked him and he did, he said, we didn't cover that?
No, I asked him because I felt I was a little blindsided by finding out that other members had contacted him on June fifth, so.
You were not blindsided by me. I told you when I walked in the room that I just spoke with him fifteen minutes before I got into that room and told you or tried to tell you what he said.
We have a motion on the floor. Let's get back to the motion. The motion is that we give the sheriff the right to use the, actually, three positions, I guess, as his, a total of five, as he sees fit, and he and the county manager will work it out. And if it involves putting two road deputies on, it will be approximately ten thousand dollars more that will be added to his budget. Is that correct?
Actually, it would be more if, depending upon the equipment that they would need for the deputies.
But we're willing to do that.
Cover the debt, is what he said.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is passed unanimously. According to my judgment, let's see, we haven't passed on the budget, budget ordinance yet, have we?
We have not had a formal motion on the ordinance.
Okay, need a motion on item D?
So moved.
Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Yeah.
Vote is five to two. It passes out of the. Okay, motion five, passes out to two six. That being all of the business that is before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned.